Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board on Thursday, November 19th at 6:30 PM. This is a remote meeting and in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30, A, section 20 relating to the 2020 Novell Coronavirus outbreak emergency, the November 19th, 2020 public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, this meeting can be viewed in progress. Please go to the facebook.com/LakeCam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting and this meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecom.tv backslash. For the record, for attendance tonight, I have members Peter Conroy, Michelle McCracken, you have Jack Lynch and myself, Mark Knox. Barbara Mankowski is absent currently, she may attend a little bit later. Clerk Kathy Murray is with us. We have some members of the zoning board of appeals sitting in, I see Jeff Youngquist, Chris Campo, Chris Sheedy. Is there anyone else from ZBA here tonight? I believe that's it. And the first item on our agenda is the site plan review of 149 Bedford Street. We're meeting with Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers. Before I turn it over to you Jamie, I'd just like to go through, we have some notifications from some of the boards and departments in the town. First up, from the Lakeville Board of Health. Dear Chairman Knox, we have received a copy of the site plan for 149 Bedford Street. The plan from Zenith Consulting Engineers dated 10/2/20 shows a proposed office building with an area for a subsurface sewage disposal system. The area appears to be sufficient to support a sewage disposal system and it is possible to connect to municipal water, so there is no need for a well. Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time. From the Conservation Commission. The Conservation Commission has not yet held a hearing on this property. The applicant has submitted an RDA or NOI. It is my opinion at this time that an NOI will be required. Preliminary review of the plan has determined that the 100-foot buffer zone extends into the southern part of the site. The proposed driveway and infiltration basin are located in the buffer zone. The entrance exit onto Route 18 should be evaluated for relocation to avoid wetlands and traffic issues. In addition, a drainage structure exists on the northern edge of the buffer zone and crosses into, in a southwesterly direction. I believe this is a typo here, also what is the, I believe it's supposed to be vehicle storage area to be used for? And I believe that was shown on the first plan for during construction of site equipment, but I'll let you address that after Jamie. The Lakeville Fire Department had comments. We've already read the length of the driveway appears to be in excess of 150 feet in length. Myself and I believe the applicant's engineer in representation has spoke to Chief O'Brien with some sort of a resolution. Matthew Perkins, the chief of police. They had the public safety concern of the proposed structure because of the close proximity of the road. I believe we addressed this at our first meeting and we read that into the record as well. And finally, the Board of Selectmen made comment. At the November 2nd, 2020 Board of Selectmen received the site plan for 149 Bedford Street. Board of Selectmen had several concerns or comments regarding the proposed site plan. One of those concerns is that there is a 40-foot setback requirement around the building. Based upon this plan, the building only meets that requirement on the rear side. On the corner of the Bedford Street and Rhode Island Road sign, there is only a 15-foot setback and there is an 18-foot setback on the other side. It suggests, it is suggested that the building be shifted to the left for proper sightlines at the traffic lights. Also, it was noted that there seems to be different configurations regarding the parking area. Does the building remain the same while the parking area varies? That's a question. The next paragraph reads, "In regards to the proposed signage, it seems to be approximately 10 feet from the property line. If the building is shifted, the sign should also shift back." It is a 13-foot height sign and drivers will need to, will need proper sightlines coming from Bedford Street. Regarding the Bedford Street proposed entrance, there is a concern about fire engines being able to turn around there. Selectmen also felt that no entrance should be allowed off Rhode Island Road. It was also noted that the plan calls out municipal sewer and water, but there is no municipal sewer. I know that we discussed that and that's a typo that probably was addressed. And the Selectmen would like to recommend the planning board do a peer review, but they don't specify on any one discipline on the location just due to complexity. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to you Jamie.
Good evening everybody, Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers. I'm going to go over, I believe, the issues that Chairman Knox had just addressed. If I may, I'd like to pull up the plans to share with everybody.
Go ahead and share your screen Jamie.
Thank you. All right, so a week ago, Niles from my office had attended the planning board meeting in my place and presented for the first time the 149 Bedford Street site. As you're probably well aware, there's an existing building that's right on the corner. We're looking to raise that building, demolish it and remove the existing two curb cuts that are right on the, on the intersection right now. And propose, we're proposing a new building that is setback further from the property lines than the existing building currently is. So we're making, in our opinion, a pretty significant improvement. One of the things that I do want to point out with the 40-foot setback is, business does have a 40-foot setback from all sides, no question about that. But when you have an existing non-conforming structure as we do, special permit process through the zoning board of appeals, which we have a meeting with after this tonight, can grant a special permit to allow you to keep your existing non-conformances. And in this case, we would actually be making the site significantly better. The reason for not pushing the building further back towards, on Rhode Island Road is, right now we have 42.9 feet. The further we push it back, we would start creating a non-conformancy after additional 2.9 feet of moving. So let me go through the issues one by one if I may. I believe there was some discussion regarding landscaping on the property line for screenage with the, the butter at the last meeting. We have updated our planting and vegetation plan to correspond and show some screenage in that area. I believe that this was the intention that the board had asked for and that is now part of the, the record plans. The second was, the, I believe that some architectural plans were shown at the, the last meeting that showed potential buildup for a second story, which the owner of the property is not looking to do right now, but in the future if she wants to. What we did was we showed a future area and we call that, it's a potential future parking expansion area. We would need an additional five spots. So this dashed area right in here would actually fit parallel parking spots for cars if there's the need for them in the future, based on the same type of office use that they have now. Our note clearly states that if this was to be constructed, the design approval would have to be looked at by an engineer and also by the planning board and the Conservation Commission. And, and the reasons for that are, right now our drainage system is designed to handle what we show on this plan. It may not need anything, or it may, it really depends on if we're going to be building just the five, how we want to support the back of it, the conditions on-site, et cetera. So I think that, that may warrant a look further down the line if they do exercise that option, but as of right now, this is just merely to show in the future something that could possibly happen, but I do believe we'd need to get a little bit of a further look. We definitely need conservation approval because it's shown in the 100-foot buffer zone.
Jamie, while you're on parking, could I just touch on that, that I'm looking at the Lakeville zoning bylaw. I'm assuming that you have used the office as what you have gauged the parking on, which our zoning bylaw reads that one space per 300 square feet of gross floor area, one per each employee, whichever is greater.
Yes.
So the building being less than 1,500 square foot on the first floor is where you derived the five spaces?
That's correct. And actually, the five spaces, one of those five could be ADA accessible. So we actually have an excess of one space shown on here per the zoning code.
And, and I know it's not part of this, but if the second floor was built out, what kind of square footage would be up there for the additional five? Is it less than 1,500 square feet that, so that that would be more than adequate?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Go on.
So one of the comments that the Conservation had, Mr. Bouchard had brought up and, and him and I actually, we talked about it on the phone earlier this week, was the vehicle storage. And if I may, I'm going to scroll down to our, this is our erosion control plan. I think he was looking at the 24 by 60 vehicle storage area. This plan is completely intended for during construction, where you would have a construction entrance, where you would place the construction vehicles, de-watering, washout area, stockpile area. It's, it's more for conservation and the contractors to know where they should be placing the equipment to help protect the resources that are offsite and abutting properties from siltation and erosion or any type of spills. I did explain that to Mr. Bouchard and I think that, you know, he was, he understood as soon as I, I pointed that out to him. The driveway location, that, that one should be pretty easy for me to explain. On Monday of this week, I had a Zoom meeting with Mass DOT. The point of this intersection for, for a safety standpoint is to try to get as far away from it as you can for an entrance and exit out onto the road. Mass DOT agreed that this is absolutely the best spot on the site for us to be able to get in and into and out of our site. They would prefer us not to try to access and remove part of their guardrail system, which starts after here. And they also have an easement within this area here, they'd prefer us not to access over it. So this is absolutely, in my opinion, the best spot to access on the site. So I think, I think from an engineering standpoint, this is going to be the spot to access. The, the Selectmen had talked about the setbacks and I had touched a little bit based on that. I do understand, new construction, if this was a vacant lot, absolutely 40 feet from all sides would be required. We're meeting with zoning board of appeals sometime after 7:00 and we'll be asking for a special permit, which is pretty common to get with a tear down and rebuild. We're improving the situation. The applicant could keep the existing building and fix it up where it is, you know, if they so chose. This is a much better scenario than that. And then I did hear, I did hear a comment about the sign setback as well. The setbacks for the sign in the zoning bylaw is 10 feet from the street, we meet that. We're also less than the required 20 feet in height from the crown of the road that we're proposing, but we're asking for a little bit of a larger sign. So again, we'll be in front of the zoning board of appeals tonight to seek a special permit for that bit of a larger sign. And then I did hear something about the municipal sewer and water. I'll be honest, that's the first that I've heard of the municipal sewer on the plan set that should be corrected. This is absolutely septic. So we will look at making that correction.
Jamie, I got a question for you on the site plan, just out of, for personal education. It says, "All work shall conform to the City of Taunton rules and regulations." Why is the City of Taunton involved?
They're the supplier for the water. So, so what we do is, we have an intermunicipal agreement with the, Mr. Lynch, where they take their water out of our ponds and then they, they give it back to us through their network and system. So the water lines themselves have to meet Taunton standards, they come out and inspect them.
Thanks Jamie.
My pleasure.
So, one thing I'd like you to touch on that you didn't Jamie?
Yes sir.
The emergency, if I want to call it, I think that's a strong word, exit that the fire department has requested because of the inability to, to back up or turn around a truck on the site and then in turn, that's also affected the dumpster location. So I just want to make sure that that's...
You're absolutely right and I do apologize about that. So the, the state fire code talks about a fire truck not having to back up greater than 150 feet when it's in a dead end situation. And if it is, they want you to provide a turnaround. On a site like this, the, the site conditions don't allow for a turnaround. The, the lot's just too narrow and the size truck that Lakeville has just, it's not going to make the turn. So we talked to the chief and he had talked about how, we, we went over a couple of options, but having in the emergency exit out in the case that they would ever need to access the site and get out, they could pull straight out. For safety reasons, we're looking to put in a gate with a lock that has a Knox key so the fire department can unlock it and drive straight out. We've also added notes on there that the only, the chief was adamant that the, that that pathway be plowed and maintained so in the event that they need it, it's, it's usable. So our note says that the gate is to remain closed unless used for emergency or maintenance purposes. Purely maintenance purposes are to make sure that it's a clean, stable surface, free of snow and any, any type of debris. We also have signs being, "Do not enter an emergency vehicle only." And you're correct, we did have to move the, the proposed dumpster to the side. What that will do is that will actually force us to have a rollout dumpster because there's not going to be a way that a truck is going to be able to turn that 90 degrees and load into the, to the dumpster pad. So they'll have to have a pushout, rolling dumpster that the truck can take and load that way. That's not as ideal as what we would have liked, but it's, it is what it is.
And when you say a rollout, you're talking about one of those little two-yard dumpsters with casters on it?
Most likely, yeah. I mean, they have a few options, but I can't see anybody pushing a 10-yard dumpster out of there.
No, I agree. But I also don't imagine that much refuse would come out of the two or three...
I highly, yeah, I agree, I highly doubt it.
All right, do any other board members have any questions or concerns or comments?
Mark, I have a couple of questions of Jamie, easy probably. First off, so I, at the last meeting, we talked about the, the letter from the police chief stating his concerns and I think he's relieved that the building's being moved back, but it seemed like he was under the impression that there may be a retaining wall or something to stop cars from hitting this building. Has anyone gone back to him and, and told him there's presently no plans for a retaining wall or a guardrail?
Not to cut you off Jamie, but I, I, when I was looking at the site today, I noticed, which I've never really paid much attention to, the guardrail. Do you have a plan that shows the existing guardrail all the way to that corner?
The guardrail that we show comes up over to here.
Yep.
So it ends, it ends in this vicinity here on our survey. I'm unaware of anything that goes beyond it because we have a driveway entrance here.
Yeah, and is that going to stay in place, the guardrail that is there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and in fact, they, the DOT in the future may want to continue it. In fact, when we go for our Mass DOT permit, they may mandate that we continue it up to a certain level, because if you look across the street, it does go a little further up. So again, we can't file officially with Mass DOT until we have all local approvals. But I did, I did meet with them because I didn't want to present something to the planning board and the zoning board and then have Mass DOT tell me something completely different.
So, I don't know if I distracted you and cut you off from Peter's comments about the retaining wall?
Yeah, so Peter, I, I don't, the only thing that I can think of is that he, he was looking at our existing conditions plan or maybe one of our layout plans and saw what appeared to be a wall, or what is, what is the remnants of a wall and thinking that it might stay. We, we have not proposed a wall on this site. I have not talked to him about the wall or putting a wall in. You know, we, we kind of looked at it from a standpoint of, you know, the house has been there for a long time and I'm not aware of it, having been hit, it may have, but I'm not aware of it. We're moving it further back. But if, if the planning board's not comfortable with that, then, or the zoning board, then, you know, we'll, we'll address it.
Well, thank you. I would like you to give a little bit more in-depth dissertation about the setbacks that exist in comparison, not to the layout of the road, but to the actual roadway, because I think that's what a lot of people don't understand is the difference between the layout of the road, which is back on the property quite a bit, which is what we're looking at, it looks like the more pronounced line?
Yep.
And the actual curbing on the roadway and there's a bigger difference there that I think people think that the house is still going to be, or the building is going to be, still be 15 feet from the actual road, but you're probably 20 feet.
Yeah, no, no, I, that, that's a great point Mark and, and I do get that a lot from people. So, so the darker line that I'm kind of rubbing the cursor over now that has the, the hatching on it is actually the property line or the right of way line. And that's, when, when we're referring to the right of way, that and the setbacks, the 15.1 proposed feet from the building corners to the property line. Mark is right, the, the actual curb line, the granite curbing on the corner here is further out and that is where the pavement starts for the roadway. So there is, there, there's greater than 15 feet to the asphalt and as you can see over on the sides and even on this area, there's, there's several feet in addition to that.
So, that being said, a lot of people are concerned about sightlines with the sign in the building.
Sure.
On the Bedford Street side of the, the building or the property, what's the actual distance from the proposed sign location that's 10 feet from the layout of the road? What is it to the actual roadway?
So to the actual roadway is, has got to be somewhere around 20 feet. I can give you an exact, I'll have to open up my AutoCAD program though, but it's, it's in, it's in the vicinity of 20 feet.
Do any other board members have any questions?
Yeah, I, Mark, I, I have another question. In regards to the sign, did, did the Selectmen want the sign not only shifted back, which we already addressed that and I'm fine with it, did, did they want it pulled further down Bedford Street for any reason? And while we're mentioning the sign, I, I wanted to say something because after last week's meeting, I, I don't think I left it on a good note. I drove past Tamarack Liquors like almost every day this week, especially at night, and they have a very similar sized sign. So I don't want to be hypocritical about giving this sign like a, a negative, you know, comment and then driving right by Tamaracks, you know, this is for the Jamie and, and also the, the future owners, you know, so I, I do, I do understand now, I jumped out at Tamaracks and I measured it, it's a good sized sign and it's, it's very similar in height, so if that helps at all. I know some members of ZBA might be listening as well, so that's just my, I just wanted to make that comment. I know the sign is a bit of a sticking point, so.
Thank you.
But Jamie, as far as moving down Bedford Street, is there any thought on that?
We, we weren't moving it down because we have our proposed septic system going in that area.
Okay.
Peter, let, let me just show you the constraints that we have. So right now, we have a Mass DOT green adjustment over in this vicinity. Our stormwater system is going in that same vicinity as well. We have wetlands across the way and on the other side offsite, so buffer zone. So we're trying to keep it out of the buffer zones, out of the town easement. We have to stay 20 feet off of the building at a minimum for the septic as well. So we're kind of, we're kind of, it's getting tight, I guess is the best way to put it. So the sign fell in the, if you were to drive there now, it would be in the existing driveway, part of that driveway, but it stays out of the septic system in the overdig. You know, it's located pretty close to the existing building and except for the size, it meets all the zoning requirements.
So to touch on what Mark said about the difference between our property line right there, 10 feet from the property line, distance to the street, would you say, is, is 20 to the, to the signpost?
Well, what's going to happen here, just, just so we're, we're very clear is, Mass DOT is going to make us close off this curb cut as part of our filing. So part of our construction is going to be to ta, and, and they're going to mandate to us what we do, but they may have us extend this granite curbing partway down or all the way down to, to the end here. They may have us take and extend the, the side, the guardrail up. But this dash line is roughly where the, the edge of pavement runs connecting pavement edge to pavement edge when it's closed off and yes, that, that is roughly 20 feet from the edge of the sign.
Thank you, thanks.
Hey Jamie, the sign which is 15 feet by seven, that falls within the town requirements?
It's not 15 feet, it's, the total height is 15 feet.
Yeah, total feet is 15 feet, yes, and then seven feet across.
Yep, so, so if I may...
15 feet tall from the ground up, there's legs on, we, we don't want to construe to the public that this sign is hundreds of square feet.
No, 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 you know, you know, I, maybe I misspoke, but it's 15, the total sign is 15 feet up from the ground and seven feet across.
It, it, it's in that ballpark, that's correct. It's, it's a little more than seven across. I would say if you were counting the posts, you're looking at roughly eight feet and the overall height of the sign will be somewhere in the 13, 14 foot range, it could be 15. Remember, the Lakeville zoning bylaw talks about height is taken from the crown of the road in front of it, which is the center of the road typically. So the roadway could be a couple of inches higher or, or lower, but at the ground, we anticipate it's going to be right around 13 feet, two inches to the top of the sign.
And the zoning board, does it feel this is going to be distractionary to the drivers?
We will find out very soon. I haven't presented to them yet.
Okay.
The actual sign is 5'6" by 7'6". Send it up on posts. In the sign, the sign regulations, 6.6.3.2, "Sign shall be limited to a maximum height of 20 feet as measured from the crown of the road directly perpendicular to the sign." So you're well underneath what's allowed for the height of the sign, it's only the square footage of the placard that's in question. And even at that, it may be considered a common directory sign, which would be allowed 64 square feet, but I think you guys are doing due diligence to say we're treating it as a common sign.
That's right, so if, if a building has, and that's a great point, Mr. Knox, if a building has or a site has more than one use, you're allowed a sign per business or a common directory sign, which is allowed to 64 square feet. If you drive up and down Main Street, you'll see a lot of oversized signs that have multiple businesses in them. This could take on that persona because it's going to be an office building and it's definitely going to have at least one or two businesses inside. Instead, what we're doing is we're looking to just dot our i's and cross our t's and, and come in and, and ask for the special permit because it's really close in size requirements to meeting the, the regulations, it's slightly bigger. This shouldn't be a huge, a huge ask on, on any means, by any means.
Okay, and, but again, I know we're not the special permit granting authority for the signs, but there was some question at our last meeting. permit granting authority for the signs, but there was some question at our last meeting about, uh, general sign prohibitions of signs in any part that moves, flashes, incorporates traveling or animated lights, beacons, flashing devices, um, whether a part or attached to the sign are prohibited.
Yeah, and, a- and I, I'd like to expand on that and maybe have Madeline, because, um, that, you know, that, that's, that's a, that's a part that I just, I think we wanna make very clear.
So, I didn't, I didn't finish with, I talked to, uh, Nathan Darling, the zoning enforcement official. Um, and basically, he, he's not really in favor of that type of sign, but they're all over town. To his point, right next door, and Peter had brought up Tamarack Liquors. There are many of those signs that do that, uh, and what he had expressed was that he or, um, the police chief have the ability to enforce if they become a traffic hazard.
They do, and that, that's in the zoning bylaw very clearly. Um, a- and there's time, time, uh, associated with when, how long people have to, to fix those issues. Uh, the, the proposed sign is, is gonna be, um, n- not a flicker type of a sign, but it, it, I believe there's roughly an eight or ten second refresh rate on, on the image changing. It's not gonna be like a television um, action screen that's gonna draw people to wanna watch TV on it. It's just an advertisement. And then, i- is, let's say that they have my house is up for sale with a picture of my house. Eight to ten seconds later, it might be Madeline's house on the screen for sale. And then eight to ten seconds later, it might say, vote, you know, on August eighth for such-and-such election. And then ten seconds later, or whatever the refresh rate is, but I think that they're looking for an eight to ten second minimum on that refresh rate, but Madeline, please correct me if I'm incorrect on that.
I believe that is correct, Jamie. Um, if we want to be better versed on it, I believe Bob Messier is on the Zoom meeting with us. And he is the, um, he's the sign guy.
Okay.
Is, Mark, can you see him on the Zoom? I know that he's going to be there for the zoning board of appeals meeting.
No, I don't. Um.
But that was what was discussed, yes.
To speak to that, I did talk to, again, Nate about that. And he had said that the zoning board of appeals has the ability to condition into that sign approval, that refresh rate, so that if they felt the, the public safety or the traffic safety was an issue, that they could request to condition the length of refresh rate or the duration, maybe a little bit longer if there were concerns about it seeming too, uh, distracting that close to the lights, but that's up to the zoning board appeals if they, how they address that. Um. So you were gonna make the changes in the notes about the, the onsite sewage rather than public sewer? Concom, you've qu- addressed those concerns, and they meet on Tuesday night?
They do. We're not in front of them this Tuesday. Um, we wanna see how the zoning board meeting is gonna go next. Um, and make sure that all of our changes are completed, um, if there are any from zoning board prior to filing with conservation. Um, all of our work is buffer zone work, um, and I believe the majority of it's even out of fifty feet. Um, so I, I don't believe that there's, there's any potential risk to the resource areas.
Um. Lost my train of thought there. Oh, uh, so we satisfied the, uh, discussion about the gate, the lock, with the fire department turning around. Nobody else has any questions about that? And we did request Madeline for you to supply us with a, a lighting plan. Were you able to come up with anything for that?
I have not had the chance to do that between then and now, Mark.
Okay.
Um, Ms. Chair?
Yes, Michelle.
Could I just ask a couple of questions to Jamie about, um, the plans that he went over? Um, the first one, you had said if the building was to move back additional two feet, it would create additional non-conformity?
No, I, I was saying if it moved back beyond the two point three additional feet, so we have a forty-foot rear and side and front setback. Right now, I believe we have forty-two feet to the rear. So if we go beyond that, less than forty feet, that would create a, um, a new non-conformity. Let me get up to that sheet. I apologize, Michelle. Couple sheets down on us. Here we go. Yeah, forty-two point nine feet to this, this, whether you call it a sideline from Rhode Island Road or a rear line from Bedford Street, it doesn't really matter because it's forty feet all around. See, how, how, how they look at it is right now, we have a non-conformancy to this, this lot line and this lot line over in here. Um, if we're making the non-conformances to these lot lines better, then that's an improvement. Right now, this, this abutter here doesn't have us, um, within a non, non-conformancy of our building to their property line. So for us to actually move it back and put it less than forty feet, in my opinion, would require a variance, not a special permit. But to move our building and, and make the situation the same or better to what we already have is a special permit.
Cause I was picturing two feet down, um, south.
South, this one, sure.
Yes.
And, and I can explain the, the problem with that. I- it's actually multifold. So one, as you can see, we have twenty feet on the dock to our proposed septic area. Then you can see the proposed to the existing mass DOT catch basin and easement area, also the drainage system in here with setbacks. The other part is getting the ADA compliant handicap access ramps and walkways to work. Um, it's kind of, it's kind of a chain reaction. You move one thing and you've got to change five additional things. And so when I was working with Madeline to kind of get this layout to work, um, you know, it, it was a struggle, but, but we got it there. And, and this plan does work.
And then, um, for the parking, the additional parking that you did add, which is great, um, now, when, when we were looking at the slope though, it looks like a two-to-one slope where the parking is proposed.
Yeah, no, you're a hundred percent right, Michelle. Um, e- typically, we would have looked to have put parking exactly this way on the side coming out. Problem is, we'd be one foot off the property line, which is unbuildable. Um, you'd have a retaining wall that just, you, you wouldn't feel comfortable with. You'd, you'd be digging a footing on the abutters property. That's why we put in parallel parking spaces here to minimize the length coming out of sight. Also, what that does is that's gonna allow the applicant to build a partial wall, most likely, and do some grading at the bottom uh, with far more, uh, workroom than they would have if they had gone the other way. But again, what we're stating here is it's just a potential future parking area. Um, if the zoning regulations for parking sizes change in the future, um, conservation standards change, the dent, the amount of parking spaces required, all this stuff would need to be revisited if it does come up. And we wanted to make sure that that was stated very clearly here, um, on our notes with the plan.
But so, I mean, we did see the elevations at the last meeting and, you know, she did say it was only, she said it was only storage.
Oh, yeah.
For the second level, but it did show two offices. So I feel like, you know, if, if you're gonna have the complete structure, you know, built, I feel like the parking is kind of essential, um, especially if she was to sell it, um, you know, then, and not really change the use.
Sure.
Um.
I do, I do understand, um, I do understand your situation, uh, your, your concern. We, we actually hear this a lot on site plans. Um, the what ifs, uh, is, is kind of what I refer to them as. Um, the, the way, the way that I look at it is I can only really try to design as to what we actually have before us. Um, you know, and, and what I know we have before us is my client's intent to build an office building of about fifteen hundred square feet. Um, with, with the parking that we have that's required. For her to, uh, construct that second floor, she's gonna need a building permit. That building permit's gonna trigger Nate Darling to look at it as a zoning enforcement officer. He'll say, you don't have enough parking, and then she'll have to, or the owner at that time will have to revisit. Again, there's nothing in your mind probably saying, well, what if somebody just finishes it without a permit? I, I can't, and nor can any board really police people from breaking the law, but um, that's not the intention at this time. I know Madeline's just, she, she thinks one, two, three steps down the road. And I don't blame her, but her intention right now is that first level.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Michelle?
Um, I mean, I, I was, I was curious to see the lighting plan, um, you know, considering it's right next to the residential, um.
Sure.
I think it's kind of important.
Yep. I, I can tell you from my experience with lighting, and I agree, um, having a lighting plan on file is gonna be great. Um, the things they can do with LED lights, um, for directions, um, and strengths is pretty amazing. Uh, they literally can lay, uh, aim the diodes now, so they can, they can, they can shoot them almost like twenty, fifteen, twenty degrees away from a property line if they need. Plus, we have the dark night sky regulation in Lakeville. Um, but that being said, we do need to provide you with a lighting plan and we will.
Um.
Did have one more thing, actually. I wanted to ask, is there any, um, anywhere that you have on record where the current stop line for the Route eighteen, uh, going north? Um, where that stop line is?
You mean in, you mean over on this, on this side over here?
Yes.
No, we don't.
Yes, to me, I just, I wanted to see, you know, is it, is it a significant improvement? Is it still blocking that, this, the sight line going? Cause that's, you know, uh, Rhode Island Road, it has a slope. And Route eighteen, people fly. I, I saw a really bad accident, you know, just over a year ago or so. And the car was directly opposite, down in the ditch, um, and the, the whole wheel assembly was probably twenty yards south of Tamarack, so that just tells you the impact at that location. So, I mean, I do, I'm very concerned about the safety as well, um. I think it, a, a, a significant improvement on the sightline would be, um, beneficial.
Hmm.
Well, you are, what, what are you gaining on that Rhode Island roadside, Jamie?
Um, well, I mean, we're pushing it back from about two feet from the diagonal, which would be the short measurement to fifteen. So I mean, we're gaining, we're gaining thirteen, roughly thirteen feet. Um, so from a standpoint of if the stoplight line is back here, the visibility is increased drastically. Um, from over here, the stop line is gonna be up, and they're gonna be looking, um, most likely passed in this direction. I think the, the biggest improvement is gonna be for people driving down Rhode Island Road, um, towards, um, towards eighteen, um, and towards Main Street.
Okay, um. Are you all right for a moment, Jamie? I just wanted to.
Yeah, absolutely.
I received some comments and email from Barbara who couldn't be here right at six thirty. Uh, some of the points we've already touched on. Um. One of the things that she had, uh, voiced concern, and I think it would be more handled by Concom, is the maintenance of the retention basin.
Hmm.
That's gonna be buffer zone, so it'll be in oper- operations and maintenance order with the notice of intent.
Yeah, so we're, we're within a hundred feet of a wetland resource, Barbara, and this is a commercial project, so stormwater management is applicable. Um, which means that they'll have a full operation and maintenance, um, package, um, i- as part of the notice of intent.
Um, she mentioned her concern about the signage, what we discussed at the last meeting, we've talked tonight. Um. She reiterated about the exit on Route seventy-nine, which you've, we've, we've handled as being the only emergency exit with access keyed by the fire department. Uh, so I think that touches on all, all of her points. Um. So I, I guess I just want to reiterate, cause I just followed up with the building commissioner regarding if this project was denied.
Hmm.
The applicant could go for a building permit to renovate the existing structure in its existing location.
Yep.
It would not be business zone at that point, it would be residential zone, so I think that would be a negative impact to the tax base in the town, because you'd be then theory putting kids in the school system rather than gaining taxes from business, which the master plan states, we've, we've said we wanna grow business so that we offset the tax base of the number of kids in the school system. Uh, so I, I feel like, uh, this is a good project overall. I think the improvements that they're making are far better than what's there, and if we don't act, that, uh, we could just keep the same thing. Uh, yeah, it might ne- get new cedar shingles on it, but it's gonna be two feet from the roadway or less. So, I would recommend that the board recommend approval. I, I will wanna see some conditions, uh. Where are you as the applicant and engineer with your timing on this? I know you're gonna go to zoning board of appeals. What are you looking from the board, this board tonight for?
Madeline, can I speak to that?
Me too, yes.
Okay, so, um, our hope is tonight to get approval from the zoning board of appeals, um, on the sign and the building with the special permit. I believe the timeframes with the zoning board of appeals is fourteen days for the written decision, and then twenty day, uh, being signed off on the twenty-first day for the appeal period. Uh, Mr. Youngquist, am I correct with those times?
Yep, you're correct.
Thank you. Um, so I think what that does is that provides us the time, Mr. Knox, to get the lighting plan, make the change to the, um, municipal sewer plan, bring it back to the next meeting with the planning board, hopefully have the zoning board closed out, so then we can um, also start our filing with conservation, um, in the meantime.
Okay, I definitely would like to be able to, if we recommended approval, have you at least through one of those two boards.
Okay.
Um, if you can't obtain a lighting plan in time, I would entertain conditioning, or if you put on the plan, that the lighting plan would comply with Lakeville's lighting bylaw, which would include all of the lights mounted on the building.
Okay.
I know that, that was an issue with, uh, the Dollar Tree or whatever it's called, but I guess there have been some complaints about the sconces, which I don't think were included in the lighting plan, so we wanna make sure that all outside lights would be compliant with the lighting plan if you can't come up with something in time.
Understood.
Um, so that being said, if you could put that on the plan either way, and then if you are able to provide a lighting plan in time, uh, that's great and we'll have one on file, but if not, it's, at least would have the dog in the fight that you have read on the plan, that you have said that you would make it comply with the Lakeville by- lighting bylaw.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question on this point? Um.
Go ahead.
Would, would we require the tree line to be also indicated on the plans?
You, I, I can show that.
You know what, actually, Jamie, if you could go back to that, I had another concern about that, that I'd like you to address if you can.
Absolutely.
Madeline.
Just bear with me for one second, there we go.
Okay.
My concern is to the, the lower part of the, the plan, um, where the entrance is.
Yes.
Somebody's coming into the parking area in the evening with their headlights on.
Hmm.
The lights could actually, uh, go behind the trees to the back of the house. I think if you pan back and so, it's gonna illuminate their backyard, so I don't know if with the grading, because you're pitching down pretty good there.
Hmm.
Uh, if it's possible to do something to mitigate the light a little further along towards that culvert, so that at least until they're pointed parallel back to the street, that you've eliminated the light from panning across their backyard.
Y- yeah, you know, that, that's actually a, a really good point that I, I didn't see. Um, what I, what I would do is I'll take, we'll take and we'll do, we have a turning radius program. Um, we'll take and we'll model a couple of vehicles pulling in, and then we'll be able to project the lights over in here, and, and we'll see what we can do to, um, you know, to address that issue.
That would be great. I think that, that would help a lot. Um. So based on tonight's meeting, I think it's been a positive meeting. Um. The, the planning board's schedule and with what you need to go through with zoning board of appeals and Concom, would you be all right with us continuing until our December tenth meeting?
Uh, nineteen, yes, that, that won't, that won't have a negative impact on us. Um, we would like to get verbally though from the board that, um, that you, that the board doesn't have an issue with the sign. I believe that might be part of zoning boards. Um, that, a- and I don't even know if it is, but zoning board, I think, will feel comforted, as you will, when they have their approvals. I think they're gonna wanna make sure that they're not stepping on planning board's toes as well. Uh, we're not looking for an approval, but just, just a nod saying that. you know, going forward with them and hopefully if they close things out then we can with you.
Kathy, did you have, do you have the comments that we requested to be sent to the ZBA regarding the sign at our last meeting? I, I'm going to paraphrase, but I believe we said that if the zoning board of appeals decided to grant relief on the size of the sign,
Yep.
that we would recommend that they just make sure that all other aspects of the sign comply with the town's bylaw for signage.
Okay, excellent. Look, that, that's perfect then.
That was our recommendation to ZBA at our last meeting. So I think if, I'm going to go roll call through everyone else. Barbara, has anything changed with that?
You know, I'm not a fan of the signage. I, I, I think I, I, I included some concerns about the prohibited, prohibited effects from the existing design, but I'll show up to ZBA as a concerned citizen rather than implementing through planning board because I think in planning board, we, we are within the distance range for guidance. So I'm going to have to go with that.
Peter?
Mark, earlier in the meeting, I mentioned about how I probably, last week, I was more negative about the sign. But after driving by Tamarack all this week, I actually really didn't have a problem with it. I'd like for the intensity to stay similar. I know that I've, I've driven by these similar signs and they're just like crazy bright. But the one at Tamarack's is, is similar in size and it does refresh every like 10 seconds or so. And if, so that didn't really bother me. It, it, it's just the brightness. So I really don't have a problem with it, you know?
Michelle?
Um, I mean, I feel like it's a little different than Tamarack because Tamarack is farther down Route 18. This is so much closer to the set of lights. My concerns are safety, honestly, especially with the widening of Route 79. There's going to be heavier traffic volume. I just, I personally, I'm concerned for the safety of it, honestly. I would, I wouldn't mind a peer review in regards to the sign in that proximity to, I think it's, it's going to be difficult to say though because there is 79 improvements are, you know, a few years down the road, but they're coming. So, I mean, like I said, is it, number one, safety. Is it going to be safer than it is currently with no sign? I don't know.
Wouldn't some of those concerns have been identified and addressed by the police chief and he, he's approved this, right? So certainly he's thinking, I saw your similarity, you would, you're thinking, Michelle.
Well, the, the thing I'd like to point out to everybody is if we subtract roughly nine square feet off of the sign, we, we have it by right. You know, the light up sign, we're not in front of zoning board of appeals. You know, the building inspector can grant the sign. Again, if he thinks that it's creating a traffic issue like we talked about earlier, he has the ability to enforce or, or I believe it's the police chief can enforce acts to make them calm the lights down if there are any issues. But this is, this is going to be a sign from everything that's been explained to me from Madeline and Liam that is going to have a picture, eight to 10-second refresh with a new picture. It's going to be the minimum of 10 feet off the property line, roughly 20 off the existing pavement. And the special permits for 9.25 square feet addition in size than what's currently allowed.
Oh, without flashing, right?
Yeah, there's, we're not proposing flashing on you. We're proposing screen changes.
And based on what?
Jamie, is it up to the master question about the sign?
If, if Mr. Knox is okay with it, I absolutely am.
Who's speaking?
This is Chris from the ZBA. I'm just trying to get a little bit of a heads up before our next meeting.
Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Yes, do we have any idea what types of businesses are going to be in this building?
I believe it's going to be a real estate business and there's also going to be the, the advertising company that runs the sign itself. Am I correct with that, Madeline?
Yes, you are. Me, okay, yep.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand like refreshing instance of the sign. For example, with Tamarack, you can see them advertising different products that they're selling. Trying to get an insight as to what types of business is going to be there where they would need a refreshing sign, that's all.
Yeah, so for example, on the sign right now that's on the screen that's showing the house for sale, that, that may be, that may be a perfect example. And, and Madeline, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the top one feet, four inches is just going to have the address on it, correct?
That is correct.
So, so the actual sign itself that is, is four feet, two inches by seven feet, six inches. The top part is an address sign, which I do get is still part of it, but.
That's not going to refresh.
That's, that's going to be backlit, correct? Madeline?
Yes, it is.
So it will be backlit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I speak?
Go ahead, Madeline.
I just want to reiterate that Bob Messier is going to be present on the Zoom meeting for the ZBA. And he has done extensive studies within the state of Massachusetts, specifically within southeastern Massachusetts. They've done road tests, they've done studies. He could go into more detail as to the reporting, but nothing has been determined through the Daytronic sign. This is the leading sign maker. I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to say in the world, but Daytronics is a very large, if not the biggest, sign supplier. And all of the concerns that you have regarding safety, I believe Bob will be able to speak on that and to assure you that the signs regarding the lights and the, the, the way that they move eight to seconds and they refresh, I believe that he'll be able to really satisfy any concerns.
Very good. My only recommendation to the zoning board of appeals would be if they have concerns about safety is to maybe condition that sign with the refresh rate to be a little slower because of the intersection. And again, I'm, I'm not an expert on that and I would certainly, to, to Madeline's point, defer to the sign expert and if he can give you valid information that you can entrust and or research. It's totally up to you guys. To, to Jamie's point, if the sign was just a little bit smaller, it could go there anyway with just a sign permit and still be an illuminated, refreshed sign. So. I would entirely leave that up to the ZBA. I do think that the moving of the building, we would strongly recommend that. We, we support that fully. I think the rest of the board, everybody agree with the moving of the building to become more conforming is an improvement. Board members?
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, I think this is going to be a great project. I'm excited that that building's going to be finally gone. I, 25 years I've been looking at the old one. And that with the, with the new landscaping place across the street, it really cleans the whole place up. So that's just my opinion.
All right, very good. So I, I think you have our support and we, we certainly don't want to step on the toes of ZBA, so we're going to let them do their business there.
We appreciate that.
You're welcome. So I, I think that closes out. I'd just like to make a motion to continue the 149 Beverage Street until our, I believe it's December 10th meeting at 7:00.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Phil?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, guys. Good night.
Night.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the site plan review of 202 Main Street with Riverhawk, which I was informed that no one was going to come in to represent that tonight. It's up to the planning board. I think we had vetted that and we were just waiting on any response due to if the plans were circulated in a tight amount of time. At this point, I'd like to recuse myself from this hearing and turn it over to Barbara to take over. You're muted, Barbara.
Hi, guys. So you remember that we continued this hearing from last week. We've gotten some feedback that came from, I believe it was the Board of Health and I believe it was the Fire Department. We didn't hear anything from Board of Selectmen. I believe that I have a little bit of a hard time approving it when the applicant isn't here. I'll, I'll turn that over to the floor. Does anyone have questions or comments?
Hi, May.
Yes, Michelle.
So I did see on the Board of Selectmen meeting, they did make comment and it, it was basically straightforward. I think their questions were in regards to the existing entrance and exit and, you know, in, in, in safety in regards to the entrance and exit. So they did look at, look at it. They didn't have any significant complaints or anything. I think that, you know, the Board of Health said that they do need to evaluate the septic. I personally would like to, you know, constructively approve these plans. You know, as long as Board of Health approves the, you know, the addition.
No, you're muted, Barbara.
I, I don't want to.
Yes.
I, I think that the Board of Health's intent was that it, it left the door open that they may need an improvement to the septic system if, there was an if there that was opening. And so they, they weren't granting approval, but they said, I think the system may need to be upgraded, but you'll have to find out based on usage. So it wasn't that, there was no denial. It's just a matter of whether they have to improve this septic system or not if they do the project.
Right, that's how I read it too, yes.
No retail space.
I don't think that they're by, by design of the structure and the, the use, they're not required to supply bathrooms to the public. I think it's for employees. But again, it's based on the usage and whatever the Board of Health and the engineer that they're working with would deem requiring a bigger system or if the system that exists is adequate. It's just that there was no, I don't think they did a review on it to know. And that's why Edward responded in the way he did, that they may or may not need to, but he would have no problem. It's just they would need to if required.
Jack or Pete, do you guys have any other feedback?
No, that's Mike's concern about this additional retail area about upgrading the septic system, sewer system. This, we've just talked about it. So no, I don't have anything else.
I'm good as well. I think this is a great project. Long overdue because like in the fall, there's so many people on the street that I almost thought that they started to almost need a police officer out there. So now all those guys will be pulling in, which is good. So I wish them the best.
I would entertain a motion to approve conditioned upon, well, it wouldn't, we wouldn't even need to condition it because it would be subject to Board of Health approval on that septic.
So moved with no, with no condition.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Rule call?
Aye.
It passes unanimously with Mark.
I abstain. So it passes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Nice.
Thank you for that, Barbara. I think Kathy has left also. She'll, she'll have to pick up that segment of the meeting from the, from the, the video. She was, I thought, going to include a set of minutes in this, but I didn't see him in the packet and I don't see it on the agenda. So I guess we'll be waiting for the next meeting.
Right.
So I'll entertain a motion again.
Second.
So move, motion to adjourn.
Move.
All right, now second to Jack.
I second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.